I'd like to call to order the August 8th meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michael Laney.
Here.
Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Motion second approval of the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 opposed nay, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have our citizens' presentation slot. This is the opportunity for anyone to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And do we have anyone here in the chambers or online who wishes to approach the council on an item not on the agenda? And while Pete is checking, I'll just remind everyone that we support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In all that we do, we adhere to these principles and expect everyone to do so.
There's no one online, Your Honor.
Very good. We'll move to consent.
Approval.
Second.
Motion second on consent. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? Thank you. We were all in suspense. Next up, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be back in front of you for the second meeting in a row. We've got some swearing ins to take care of tonight, and then our final promotion, which will fill out our command staff. The two new officers that were swearing in tonight will bring us almost all the way back to full staffing. We're still working on that, but we're happy to get them on board and get them started. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come down and join us. Jermaine. Shane, come on in. I'll just give a brief introduction of him real quick, if I may. Jermaine Allen is a police officer now with the city of Clive. He was born and raised in Baltimore, Maryland. Graduated from Towson University with a degree in psychology and criminal justice. He comes to us from the Polk County Jail where he worked as for nine years as a detention officer, so he was not an inmate. Jermaine also serves as a member of the United States Army Reserve as a military police officer. He will soon deploy to Europe for a year. Jermaine has always felt the desire to serve the community. He can't wait to get back from his deployment to begin his new career in policing. He will be attending the police academy following his return. Shane Patio, Police Officer Shane Patio was born in New Jersey, but he grew up in North Carolina. He also enlisted in the Army in 2011 as an infantryman and spent time in Germany, Afghanistan, and Kentucky before being discharged in 2018. In 2020, he attended the Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy in Gulfport, Mississippi. He then worked for the Bay St. Louis Police Department and the Harrison County Sheriff's Office. Shane relocated to Iowa with his wife and children in December of 2023 to be closer to family. His wife is a schoolteacher, and he has a six-year-old son and a one-year-old daughter. Shane will achieve law enforcement certification through exam in the near future. Jermaine and Shane.
Very good. We're ready to begin swearing in. After I say aye, then you say your name. That's the hardest part of this. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Shane Patio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of police officer.
And discharge all of the duties of an officer of police officers.
For the city of Clive.
For the city of Clive.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Should we do the badges and then the honor, or would you like to do that?
Uh, however you want.
Their show.
My show. We have one more oath, and this is our law enforcement oath of honor. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others.
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Very good. Congratulations. Now, we'll pin on some badges.
That one is Jermaine's.
All right, I'll trade him.
Okay.
You get a standing. You want me to sign about it?
Because we're, uh, we're just a photo op, so that looks pretty good.
Brian, you want to come in?
All right, and Brian Kepnick, many of you know him. He's been around here for quite some time. Sergeant Kepnick began his career with the Clive Police Department in 2004. He has prior patrol assignments as a field training officer, officer in charge of a patrol shift as a narcotics detective with the Mid-Iowa Narcotics Enforcement Task Force, and currently serves as the first canine handler in Clive PD history. Sergeant Kepnick and his canine partner Dutch are assigned to the third watch shift. Before working for Clive, Brian was a police officer for University Heights PD, which is over by Iowa City, and he commuted from Waki to University Heights part of that time. So Sergeant Brian Kepnick.
So are you Dutch, ready to go?
Yep.
As with the others, after I say aye. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Brian Kepnick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of police sergeant.
The duty of the police sergeant.
For the city of Clive.
For the city of Clive.
As now and hereafter required by law.
And here and now, after.
As now and hereafter required by law.
And here is now required by law.
Amen. Megan, you going to come up and pin that on him?
Little.
Just a little.
Does Dutch get one?
Got a special badge for Dutch.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dutch will get a little, he'll get a little vest with the bars and listen.
Should, little collars.
Junior sergeant.
Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. Next up, we have a GIS progress process improvement presentation.
It's ready, I think. No. All right. Hi, Council, Mayor. My name is Corey Phillips. I don't think I've had the honor to meet you yet. So I am the senior G S analyst here at the city of Clive. I'm going to try to briefly, as much as my tech brain can do, show you our process for the year. It's example of how we use analytics to improve workflows in our business systems here at Clive. All the city's staff and departments within the cities, like most business organizations, decide on the apps and the systems they're going to use based on five core principles that kind of most systems are designed around. GIS is a system just like those. It just deals with geospatial data. The main software that we use as GIS professionals is ArcGIS. The city has multiple applications that use GIS data. And because of this, the G S professional myself has to know intimately how these other softwares and applications work. So on building on that, these systems are designed and chosen, hopefully with multi-departmental use in mind. This helps limit cost redundancy and overhead for the city, but it's not always possible or appropriate to do that. So because of this, data must be shared from one system to the other ones. And because of the knowledge that GIS professionals have, myself has in this, we can efficiently accurately share this analysis and data across systems. One of these such systems is the finance department. They have many business processes that relies on data from many systems. One such data request recently revolved around working comp insurance rates. So they needed data for their annual audit. The data they needed was public works employee data by the work type they do. The source for that information was Lucidity Asset Management software. The goal is obtain the requisite amount of insurance coverage at the lowest possible rates. This is relevant because the audit just finished up this week. So here's a quick example of what a work order looks like. There's, it says roadways, streets, patching is the activity. Patching is the clean word for potholes. We patched potholes, and this is the work order for it. So 60 hours roughly are assigned to this. This would be good enough for most analysis, really. We have this much labor, equipment material assigned to this patching activity. But we designed this, our, and so back up a minute. So all of this insurance rate for this activity would go under the 6.4 insurance rate, which is the highest rate in public works. But because we've designed this system to be a little bit more intelligent design, we can break that down into individual tasks. So we actually record our public works data as six individual tasks here. The two highlighted are actually equipment cleanup and maintenance tasks, getting the truck prepared, cleaning the truck after the activity. So it's not in the roadway. Because of that, we're able to take 14.5% of those hours off of the, out of the roadway and into auto service repair, which is a rate of like 2.6, it says here. So that's not much considering the bulk of it is still in that higher rate, but it's something. And extrapolate that across the entire year, across every activity we do, it becomes a significant savings. Well, so we can further break that down to the individual employee level. So we have employees that work under a task that work under a main activity. So how do we get that data in this related table format from the asset management system into the finance? Well, I'm kind of glad you asked because that's what I like to do. That's my favorite job. I like puzzles. So I wrote a script that because of my knowledge of the Lucid database, I can write scripts and queries and reports that are a lot better than out of the box reports, that data we just can't get. So we ran a report that groups the employees by the activity they do, and it joins it with that IMWCA rate. And then that deliverables used in the audit. So we're able to tell how much percent of each work category each employee actually works in, rather than everything's in the street. Because everything's not always in the street or always in sewer. That sewer task has equipment maintenance and different things involved with it, you know, hauling and whatnot. So a really cool thing that myself and Corey Eastman found in this process was he ran up percentages and the right-of-way specialist is, they work in the right-of-way, right? 100% of the time. That's their job. It's in the title. But through these queries, we showed that actually 90% of their time is in the, in the office. And managing the permits, meetings, phone calls, working with engineers, reviewing plans. They occasionally go on the field, but most of that work in the field is done by the engineer inspectors that they work with daily. I hit the wrong, there we go. So we were able to move that employee from that 6.4 rate of working in the roadway down to a 0.19 rate. So that, that's one example for one employee. Now it varies from employee to employee. It's not always going to be a huge savings. It might be miniscule. It might not be a savings at all. But it just shows the power of this, this data. This is not a one-way street where it's just going to the thing that's requesting it. So in this process, we actually highlighted issues, redundancies, and gaps in Lucidity because it made the reporting hard to do. So now we can take this and say, hey, we need other data out of Lucidity. And so with that, we can tweak the process, which affects the people and affects the software that they use and within public works. And that kind of interaction goes back and forth pretty much constantly to improve our system. So processes and analysis like this happens quite a bit here at the city. And we can do it with almost every system. We're only limited by time and just our ability and want to do so. So any questions?
Yeah, so are the scripts that you're running?
Yeah.
Are those run in ELT platform?
I run it SQL.
SQL? Okay, all right. Because I'm thinking if you, you were talking about running these sort of analysis across more of your data sets.
Yep.
Right? SQL is great.
Yep.
But it's kind of hard, especially if you're trying to do a lot in a little bit of time.
Sure.
You know, ELT tools are fantastic for cutting down on that time to run that report. That might be, I mean, wouldn't take much to get the cost savings to justify the tool costs.
Well, and if I might sort of build on that, much of this skillset that Corey is showing you that he has is pretty unique among GIS professionals, at least here in central Iowa. Corey has really taken extra steps to become an asset where he's not just doing data visualizations and all the core responsibilities of GIS. He's covering all that. But the reason he got promoted in this last year is exactly because he can do this business analyst work. It's business analysts, analytics now that are saving us time, that are improving the way that we do all of the processes and many others beyond what he just described tonight. So efficiency with our time, efficiency with our money, more insights from all this data that we have. We're setting Corey up to be able to do more and more of that.
Corey, I love the proactive approach you've taken with this to use the analytics and use the data to streamline, you know, what our processes are, especially to use that to really dial in on, on saving money on, on, on insurance right there. So without that, you know, obviously there's a cost. So really, really appreciate your knowledge and productivity with this.
Yeah, thank you. And I mean, Corey Eastman gets a lot of credit on this one too, because it was his idea to, hey, how can we, how can we do this? And so we know the data was there. It was more how do we pull it in? You know, how do we, how do we extract that? And that's where I came in. So he gets a lot of credit for the idea on how to get that rate lower. And so I executed the how.
Great work.
Yep.
I think Councilor Klein too, it's a point, the city has a lot of data.
Yeah.
Right? And these are, we're just scratching the surface on ways to really start to use that data for not, for not just, you know, saving money and efficiencies, but also helping with decision making. And it's something that we want to continue to grow. And this is just, again, tip of the iceberg.
Good stuff, guys. Great stuff.
Is Lucidity, does that work as like an EDW or Data Lake at all, or is it really just disparate?
It's more, it's, I mean, it's, 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 so it's all structured on, the, the actual application itself is even just structured on SQL queries. So it's stored in SQL and then it's all cloud-based. So yeah, it's, it's really designed to collect that data and also help with deploying data. Because they, everything's mobile. It's a mobile application that has a map on it, so they can click an asset. Once they complete it, they can check it done. A guy in the other side of town can see that that was done. It's like live and interactive. So it's really helps with workflows in the field and for analysis after the fact.
So this may be a bit premature at this point, but as you, as you continue down this journey of kind of getting us these additional insights, you know, you were talking about the number of disparate systems that we, that we have that you're getting data. And Matt, to your point, you know, EDW can be really, really useful in those scenarios, right? You've got a single pane of glass that you can run those queries against.
Okay.
Those are, those are, it increases productivity a lot.
Right.
You know, so we can talk off.
Sure, definitely. For sure, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Next up, we move to our action items. The first action item requires us to remove the item from the table to consider it.
Go ahead, Matthew. I can help. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to take it off the table. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And clerk post that vote if possible. And that passes by a vote of five to zero. It is off the table and ready for us to discuss.
Okay. So before you tonight, again, is consideration of a retail alcohol sales license for European flavors. If you remember, at our last council meeting, there were some issues and staff was recommending denial of that license. At that time, council chose to table consideration of this item to give the applicant an opportunity to remedy those issues. I have in my hand here tonight a plea of guilty on the bootlegging charge and a receipt showing that he has paid his fine. It's our understanding that he has agreed to pay for his outstanding reinspection fees utilizing the credit that he has on his U B account right now. So at this moment, staff is recommending approval, and I don't know if Neil has anything else to add to that, but open it up to the council for any questions.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything. If those were the two issues that we had, had concerns about last meeting and discussions with Mr. Levax's attorney, then we got both of us resolved, I think, in a way that we're favorable going forward here.
And the applicant is here, but unless council has any questions, we would just recommend approval.
Move to approve the retail alcohol license rule for European flavors.
Second. Motion second to approve for discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes five to zero. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up, we have stormwater. Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. So you will recall that the, during the legislative session this spring, the Iowa legislature passed and the governor signed legislation changing up some of the practices that the city uses to manage stormwater. The whole scope of the legislation is something we continue to study, like most of the other communities in the state of Iowa. We want to make sure we're in compliance. The affected policy or affected document in Clive isn't an actual ordinance, but it's the Stormwater Management Manual. You've seen that come back to you many times before as we needed to make changes to make sure it's consistent with the best science, best practices in Iowa and federal law. While we're doing that study though, we wanted to introduce some interim language to just clarify that our manual is applicable to the extent allowed by federal and state law. So in your packet this, this evening, you'll see that exact language. It's been inserted into one of the opening chapters in the manual. After we take this interim step, we'll, we'll continue with our larger amendment work studying, getting the manual ready for a bigger change. And then by the end of this year, we plan to bring that forward for, to you, all of you for your consideration. So tonight, staff would recommend approval of this interim step.
Further discussion. So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution. Seeing no further discussion, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Grants.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you are likely aware, there are many, many federal grants out on the street right now pouring out from the Inflation Reduction Act. One of those is a grant called the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant. Administered through the US Highway, US Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. The regional group, the MPO, led a group application one cycle ago to hopefully get some dollars to put more charging infrastructure in multiple communities throughout the region. At that time, the city of Clive was not really in a position to say exactly where we thought those would best go. We wanted to time any application up with those other construction projects that we have underway. This cycle works better for our timing with improvements to City Hall and improvements across the street to the Clive Greenbelt Landing. So we are ready to move forward now, joining in round the second attempt to go after some of these dollars with our regional partners. The MPO is doing the big lift. As part of Clive's participation though, we need a resolution approving our, our resolution approving our application, joining this joint application. As I noted in the memo, there is a requirement for 20% match. We have a general sense of what those match dollars could end up being based on a 2023 estimate we had for putting infrastructure in across the street and also here at Scott Clive City Hall. But we won't know exactly what those matches potentially be until we actually get into the construction. If should we be successful with the application. One note of caution or one note to consider. This specific grant application has a preference for putting charging infrastructure in some particular areas that are, in their estimation, less likely to have the private sector bringing forward the charging infrastructure. So these are some of those Justice 40 eligible census tracts and some other census tracts in the United States. The places where we're proposing to put these here at City Hall and at Greenbelt Landing are not in one of those census tracts. However, after discussion with MPO staff, we still think it would be a reasonable application to submit, especially considering that the lift is relatively minimal and that we're already going forward with these bigger projects that could, where our EV work could be sort of folded into the larger construction happening in both locations. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any areas in Clive that would represent that area that, that criteria?
One, which is our furthest east census tract. So we, this point, without having more clarity on, I think, how we want to handle the Harbach Center and the parking around the Harbach Center, we don't think it makes sense to submit that along with these other two sites. However, the dollars are going to be out there for repeat cycles for this grant. And if it proves that it's successful, if we have people using it, people asking for it, then I think that'd be appropriate place to consider putting additional EV infrastructure.
If we see people using it or wanting it where? If we continue to see people using it where?
I think we'd want to see people using it at the Clive Public Safety Center. That is one of the spaces that, that falls within that census tract. But I think we also want to see it here too, because the Public Safety Center is a very different animal than the Harbach Center or the Aquatics Center or City Hall. One of the terms you'll hear get tossed around with EV charging infrastructure is dwell time. People who want to be able to go and do something, but while they're doing it, while they're dwelling in that location, they can be charging at the same time. If you're not set up to be a great place for dwell time, I think there's some, some questions you need to ask about whether or not for a level two charger, that's going to take you 20, 30, 40, 50 minutes to maybe get a full charge or even a partial charge. Does it really make sense to install something in that type of a location? So what you're seeing, I think nationally, are people who are interested along already corridors that are getting a lot of travel time and grocery stores. People are, people are, places where people are putting in 20, 30 minutes. They can get a little charge while they're in doing their grocery shopping. So as we see how people are using the Harbach Center, or maybe even how some of the infrastructure is coming in around the multifamily there, which is also one of the places people are concerned about getting the EV infrastructure built. It could prove that we've got that sort of dwell time that makes good sense and that we could get some real usage out of that charging infrastructure.
And are these level two chargers that we would be, okay, so there's, there's no, are we, are we exploring the possibility of fast charging?
It is an option. The standard that you need to meet for this grant is the level two. What we're proposing right now for both here and across the street would do, would be just the level two. As I understand it, the level one fast charging comes with quite a bit more electrical infrastructure needs. And we need to make sure that whatever we're, I think, setting up to build here for EV doesn't have the adverse effect of sort of blowing up the rest of the electrical packages we're talking about, the rebuild here.
So so in my day job, we have a subsidiary that does this. I, I mean, it might be worth doing a little more investigation. It's got as big an impact sometimes. And I'm not going to say it's going to be the same cost, but there may be less of a cost difference than you think for, for the, you know, getting the electrical infrastructure ready for a DC fast charger.
Okay.
There, you know, there's ways to kind of create the offset that you need without just bringing in a bunch of electrical lines.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I'm happy to have that discussion. At this point, your resolution tonight that you're considering just opens the door for us to move forward as part of the bigger application. The application has not been completed yet. What they need from us right now is just a preliminary cost estimate, so I can work on getting a bigger number or a different number that would. What they need from us right now is just a preliminary cost estimate, so I can work on getting a bigger number or a different number that would potentially accommodate fast charging. But what we want to really lock in are the locations that we're going to be submitting for this round.
The two points, Pete, one, I agree with Street Count that I think, you know, regardless, we start with a level two, I think we need to have a basis that we could advance that into a fast charge capability with minimal costs. We want to be looking forward thinking right here with with that option down the road. The other is, as you look at dwell times, you know, obviously people aren't aren't going to the Public Safety Center and spending a lot of time, but however, we also have parks that 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 might fit that dwell time capability. And, you know, having these placed strategically around the city could be part of our long term plan for an E V build out as well.
Excellent. I think that speaks to the importance of thinking about it incrementally. This isn't the last bite of the apple. This is let's do it once, let's learn from that, and then let's be ready to move forward and keep improving.
You know, one, one thing that might we might want to see if we can find a way to track is, you know, are how many E Vs are we seeing in that, you know, around or near the Harbach Center, right? We've got 86th Street Commercial District too. And so that's not too far of an offshoot for somebody looking for an E V charger in the area, right? Just say, okay, let me pop over. Because, you know, they'll all end up on apps or maps, right? So, you know, the the people that need it, they'll find a way there.
I think also as we look at park reinvestments too, and like Campbell Park, for example, at some point, you know, reinvestments there. You know, then is a natural cycle of us looking at, you know, that's another one that has a park that has a lot more dwell time with, you know, the fields and, you know, food truck Fridays, things like that. And we may want to look at how, you know, what would it take to extend that infrastructure where we have better electrical connections in that area too versus maybe some other parks. Something we could even look at with Lanan, I think it comes a little bit with the Harbach Center too of what happens there, but we could, you know, potent, we have, you know, some more off street parking there where you could, you know, put things like public chargers in. And I think what it also generates is a question too, is it, you know, right now, like, for example, the one at Public Safety, we we let that be a free charger at the moment. At what point does it flip where we all start considering at least, at least, you know, getting our costs back? There has been finally some change in state law where we're not having to pay the tax on this as a if we're providing it for free. Because Iowa did change that law related to chargers to make up a little bit for the road use tax that is being missed out on. So I think there's a point too, we haven't, we haven't gone there yet because we've had one charger. So we wanted to kind of see, you know, we have the ability to log in and see how often it's used, you know, get reporting. But as we expand, it'll be a question, okay, what time do, at what point do we want to flip it and then start to recoup the cost? It's been very, very minimal at this point. But at some point, if we expand the network, what's that look like and how we maintain it?
I would suggest the motion, I need to make the motion, but and I will, I'll make it and then I'll make my comments. Resolution approving resolution authorized into charging fueling infrastructure regional grant application.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Yeah, two things. On that, I I'm all for changing that now and getting people trained that there is a cost. And it might not be a cost immediately. It might be a cost that starts in 30 minutes or 45 or an hour.
First 30 minutes.
I think you have a charge point up there, very easy to use, cloud based app. Change it now to get them used to it. But also I think the city will need to look at some kind of enforcement of not parking at E V parking spots, right? So you look at a Campbell Park and you do a food truck Friday. I'm going to park there because it's an open spot and there isn't, it's not handicapped. It's not anything like that. So we'll park there because it's up close or or even if it's not up close, this is the open spot. So I do think we need to tackle that at some point, putting in an enforcement piece.
Very good.
Anecdotally, the the DC fast charging, the rates on that are exponentially higher than level two.
They are.
So as far as payback on investment or recouping some of those costs, that can happen, you know, a lot. I don't know the math on it, but it's it's a it's a lot higher rate than level two.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, will the council please vote?
I do have a comment to make.
Go ahead.
And this is anecdotal too, but both of my daughter's families have E Vs and parks are by far their chosen destination if they're traveling outside their home area. So I think those should be ramped up for us in terms of the best places to go. Otherwise, it just seems like we're trying to get it set up for city employees.
Rivian actually operates a network that they're looking for parks to partner with. Like they have that their whole thing is like drive off road, right? So they they might, I don't know how much they'll want to do like urban or suburban parks, but they're looking for spots.
Yep. And so many of our parks also share a trailhead. So it can be a place where you may come and play there for a bit, but you might be just using that as your leaping off point and you're going to have even more dwell time for that vehicle. Thank you for the feedback. We'll make sure that we incorporate this into our application materials.
All right. Anything else on this item?
Susan, do you have the option to vote?
Never mind. Got it.
Sorry, I have too many screens to move around.
And that passes five to zero. Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor. So very excited to share with the council tonight some performance information, information on our performance across multiple communication platforms over the past six months. You'll recall during strategic planning last year, the direct direction you gave staff was let's go bigger with our comps and let's keep getting better with our comps. The rest, recent resident survey data that we received, I think bears testament that we are accomplishing those goals that you have set for the staff and and the direction you set for the quality that you want to be delivering to your constituents. The data we're going to look at tonight is going to drill even deeper. You'll see how we're performing across our website, social media, print and electronic newsletters, among other things. In your packet, there were about 40 slides that we had because this is a report that we have shared with staff and intend to do on a more regular basis. So tonight, our communications specialist, Molly Elder, who is responsible for the vast majority of this work and analysis, she's done a wonderful job with that. We've pared down the deck a little bit. We're going to hit some of those highlights and then if we need to go to the larger deck, we can do that to answer your other questions. So with that, I'll invite my colleague Molly up to the to the lecture.
All right.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this information. There's a lot of information. Just really quick, is the are the slides showing up? Oh, sorry. No matter how many times I practiced, practiced this, right? Okay. Excellent. Should be showing up. All right, there's a lot of information to go through, so we'll just go over the highlights. We're only going over 21 slides instead of the 45. But this is really just an overview of our communications efforts, the projects that we've worked on as well as some of the analytics that we're getting in on our social and web platforms as well. So the entire report is broken up into these sections where we review information campaigns and highlights, print products, earned media, social media highlights, digital marketing platform that our leisure services department uses, and also website highlights as well. So just a quick overview of of the projects that we've worked on these last few months. A big one, the Clive Police Department Recruitment Campaign. We developed print, video and social media materials to drive a lot of interest for the police chief and police officer openings back in March. And we are also kind of resuming some of those efforts this month as well. Another piece that we worked on, the information for the 2024, 25 budget presentation and providing some more information that we can use to communicate that with the public. Another piece, we also supported the online bill pay campaign to promote paperless billing. So we were happy to help the administrative services team with that as well. So a lot of campaigns to cover. I know this is a lot of information, but we'll just cover the highlights. The resident survey was a big effort from the communication side, really encouraging participation there. We also covered a lot of our infrastructure projects as well, and it's always ongoing, whether that's through print communications and in person meetings or even digital communications on our website as well. So that's just an overview of the bigger projects we've worked on. But here are some of the highlights for communications. And so these highlights include some of the best practices or new practices that we've really incorporated into our work. Google Analytics, that was a big one for us. We were disconnected from Google Analytics with their transition to a new analytics platform. So we got everything back on track and our data streams moving. So that will be really instrumental in seeing how our website performs. And we also incorporated more video content as well. And one piece you might all recognize the newsletter production. We're in color now, so we have color printed products, but we also decreased production costs as well by bringing the design and production piece in house. So that was kind of an exciting development for the communications team. Another piece, we've also worked with the administrative services team on H R recruitment. So this includes working on promotional materials, ad designs, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well when we cover the social media piece. So those are just some of the highlights, some of the practices that we brought in to communications. So looking forward, this is just an overview of what we'll be looking at these next few months. Pete and I are looking at a mass, a mass notification system, a platform to use for text notifications, especially with, you know, winter weather coming up. That's something we are looking into. We're also discussing ways to use a digital newsletter and expanding our newsletter to a digital platform, and I'll cover that a little bit more with the email marketing piece that I have in this report. We also have a communication policy and communications guide in development. And this is a big piece for streamlining our communications across all departments. So these items are going to be used as tools by all of our other departments, especially because many of them are kind of in charge of their own communications and their social media and websites as well. So those are actually in development and we expect to have those up and running here soon. Another piece of the social media report, we keep track of our media coverage. And this is just a reflection of our efforts to promote a lot of our events. Well, events. Also, the so items such as the the budget tax rate changes, Stonegate Park reopening, tree debris pickup. These are all areas that we were able to track through Google Analytics, through our media coverage as well, and also tracking how much I guess, traffic we get onto the website when we release this information. Sorry, it's a lot of information. So on the social media analytics side, we have a lot of pages to to break down. But for the sake of time today, I will only go over the city of Clive. And I'll just explain a little bit of the process that we use when we look at kind of the overview of our social media and performance. What's unique about this is each page has kind of a different tone, a different audience. So it's important to see it as, you know, our social media goals might be different for each page. But I think overall, the big goal is to really focus on engagement across all, across the board. So in the city of Clive example, I polled social media analytics from the last six months and it compared it to the previous six months of that. So it really showed us a snapshot of reach and engagement. We were able to see that content interaction went up. However, there's still more room to grow. Once again, this is a piece of looking at the city of Clive page compared to the other pages that we have and seeing how our audience interacts with those pages. So when we talk about reach, we really just want to focus on engagement, whether it's clicking links or liking pages or sharing content. It's really just about how people are using that information and whether they're stopping, you know, they're they're done scrolling. They actually take a few seconds to look at what we post. I mean, that's the biggest takeaway for us. So here's a snapshot of what we're looking at, just a general traffic to the Facebook page. Now, what's unique about this, this is a six month period. I look at these in in month long periods as well, just so I can get an idea of what content performs well, especially when we have severe weather, you can kind of see an uptick in traffic to the page, and this is the same for the website as well. But on that note, the other part of the report on all of the other pages, I can, I take a snapshot of the content that we have and just an overall reach and engagement to see how it's working across the platform. If you can see the top reach post of over 13,000, it actually had a very small amount of engagement. I think what made this one reach so well, people shared it multiple times, but they didn't really interact with the post as much. But if you look at the other two posts with the Public Works Thank You and the Flooded Path post, you had a lot of people really stopping to look at the information, engage with it and comment and share and and try to pass that information along. So at the end of the day, we really encourage just the higher engagement rates, and that's what we're really monitoring with these pages. Another piece that we brought in, talking about the video piece, we're working more with short, short form video content. And what better way to do that than with the goats? So it's a good way to share the side of Clive about taking care of our natural spaces through the best folks, animals that we have. So and this is just a really good way to really get into the Facebook algorithm with short form video, which is very popular. Because at the end of the day, if we stop people from scrolling so that they can spend a few seconds or even a few minutes on what we post, that's a win for us. So the goats are a really good strategy for that. So this is just kind of an idea of how, how we can look at this information and and see how people are interacting with it. And as I mentioned earlier, we have been assisting the H R team with their recruitment efforts. And one way to do that is through paid content on social media. In a perfect world, our content would go as far as possible unpaid. But unfortunately, that's not how social media works. But the thing is, is with Facebook ads, it's a very, it's a very cost effective way to get information out there. And so we did a trial run with the Public Works Operations Specialist position. And what was really interesting about this is that our ads were targeted based on interest and geographic location. But as a result, we had a lot of people interacting with it. So if you look at the top of the screen, top right, it kind of cuts down the link clicks to the reach. And link clicks, that's traffic going directly to the job posting. So really getting people to our jobs page, even if they don't, you know, apply right away, that'll be something in in their minds if they decide to apply later. But as a result, it it really helped our public works team kind of boost the the amount of quality applications that they had. At the time when I wrote this report, they had two hires and they needed to fill another position, so they actually just filled their third position this week. So that's good news as to how this works. Now, keep in mind, this is not a one size fits all option. We would not do this option for every job posting, but it is something for our H R team to consider when it comes to jobs that they need to be creative with posting. All right. So that brings us to our digital marketing platform. So this is our email newsletter platform that our Leisure Services team uses. So this includes all of the Parks and Recreation Programming and Library newsletters that go out. And this is something that we're exploring as a way to expand the city newsletter and making a more digital and interactive newsletter to accompany the print version that we publish every month. So currently, with the Leisure Services team, they are working at any given time with a pool of 17,000 subscribers. So they have individualized lists for whether somebody subscribes to library services or Parks and Rec. But we have a lot of valuable information that we can pull. Now, the the piece about this, this is only in a six month period. I could pull this information at a monthly period as well to see how certain bulletins and newsletters are performing. One opt, one optimistic part about this is that our subscribers, we have a very good open rate compared to industry standard right now. Now, the click rate, the engagement rate with the content in send newsletters, that could be improved. But that's something that I can, you know, we can work with the Leisure Services team and get a better idea on how to maximize digital newsletters and using this platform. So that's something to keep in mind as we move forward. Here's an example of one specific, I think this was their highest performing newsletter from the Parks and Rec Department. This is just a snapshot of some of the information that came through on that. But once again, I I'm trying to keep this as streamlined as possible tonight. So the last piece of this presentation, it just covers the website analytics. There is a lot to dive into and I There is a lot to dive into and I think whenever you go into Google Analytics, it's, you have to figure out, okay, what information do I want to start with and what information do I want to monitor? So we kept it very, very basic and overview. So with the city of Clive, Parks and Recreation and Public Library pages, we came with a template that I repeat for each one in the full report, but we'll just go over the city of Clive page. I can look at the monthly average of user traffic. I can also pay attention to specific times. So if we have a press release or an information campaign, I can track traffic to specific pages to see if we're gaining any traction that way. There's actually an interesting piece. There was a significant spike in traffic for the Police Department Recruitment Campaign. And we have, I'll show you a graph of this soon. So when the word went out for the applications and the chief's position back in March, there was a sudden spike to the police page when we had all of those materials lined up. It also helps us track the top performing pages. And also it helps us see what, how our users are accessing our page, whether they're doing it from a desktop or a mobile device. And then one last piece on this, you could also in the top 10 pages, like the main items, the mayor's cleanup was a big information item for us, a lot of web traffic going there. So it's a really good way to measure how our information is getting out. So here's an example of the top pages and how you can kind of get an idea of how users are using that, how long they're staying on the page. And you can, you can kind of specialize what you're looking at. So this piece here, the top left, that's like the overall traffic. And as you can tell, the beginning of, beginning of March, there's a spike in traffic because to possibly correlate when, with the Police Department Recruitment Campaign. So that's a really good way for us to track that. In my experience, weather events are a good way to track specific user activity, whether on social media or on the website. So that's something that we can use in the future, especially when we have winter weather and winter weather advisories. Also, another piece of this, user devices, that's a big piece. It was interesting, I found on the recreation and library pages, their user, the breakdown of devices was a little different. So it will be a little different across the board, but people are probably using the website for different purposes, whether they're signing up programs.
Just a couple of other notes here, just with a little history too. We've been using Google Analytics since I've been here on the team and especially when we were redesigning the website. We wanted to make sure we were lifting up the things that were most important, keep it above fold. So people don't have to swipe, swipe, swipe to get to them. They can get to them right away. Two key things though, one that is a trend that has extended beyond over the last six years is there with organic search. The majority of the people who are getting to our page start just with search. Second, when I started, that split between mobile and desktop visits for the city site was still a majority desktop. But now we are majority in the six months, first six months here, we're all mobile at this point. And it's even more so with the library and with the park sites, which tells us that as we think about how we continue to evolve, we want to make sure we, again, keep the most important information that people are coming to all the time, keep that above the fold so people can get to it quick. But make sure that we are designing with mobile in mind first. That's how most people are engaging our content.
Absolutely.
Question on the, the organic search graph there, like referral, is that like through ads? Like click through on, on ads from other sites or what is referral in this case meaning?
How would they go back and look at that? Do you remember off the top of your head?
It is a very broad definition in, in, in Google Analytics. I believe it's probably from either other sites or maybe email, just other sources as well where they do have social listed. But yes, the referral traffic is very broad, but just think of it as, you know, maybe other sites, emails.
Outside links.
Outside links.
And then just, you know, more out of curiosity than anything, the, the GA, you said it was offline for a while. We had to switch versions. Are we now on GA four then?
Yes, we are in G four, as they call it. So that took a while.
Yeah, it broke in October of 23. And then we, working with Tiffany and our library department, tried to get ourselves up and running. But credit to Molly, when she got here, we really built up our bandwidth, then we were able to get into the, the Google mind and get this all resolved.
And at least for now, Google has said they're not going to make any changes for a little bit. They, they had more changes in line.
Yeah, it threw everybody for quite a loop.
They were gonna, they were gonna kill cookies for a little while.
Yeah, they were. I don't know if they're going to be able to pull that off.
Absolutely. Oh, thank you. But that actually wraps up the information of the condensed report that I have. But if you have any questions, let me know, or if you have any questions of the full report, I'm happy to go over that as well.
Questions from Molly?
Yes.
I saw in the report that you were looking at updating or changing our website. Can you talk a little more about that? And when did we last change that and what change are you looking to?
Sure. So this will be something that comes to all of you for consideration and strategic planning. The last time we rebuilt cityofclive.com and moved to a new provider was in 2018, 2019. And we went live in late 2019, early 2020. So we are coming up on five years of life for a site. Depending on what type of site you're building, that can be a little long in the tooth, or that could be something that still has got quite a bit of value in it. The whole process of hosting City of Clive right now is pretty inexpensive. And even the build, when we did it with revised was pretty cost effective. We were, if I remember right, under $30,000 for the actual build costs and our hosting annually is I think 5,000 or less. So these aren't huge dollars. However, what you saw in the resident survey is that people really, really depend on that website and they really, really depend on newsletter. And so strategically, I think we have a choice to make about, if knowing that people really want to get their information there, are there ways that we can keep making those two things better? Can we make some additional investments to take that loved source or that preferred source and further improve it? Or do we think that at this point, we're actually hitting the mark for darn well and we don't necessarily need to put more work on, on the plate? So there's a constellation of choices kind of around comps that are going to inform some of that direction that we'll be looking to get from all of you. One digital experience we've heard you all say needs to get better is the rec programming. People are signing up through Sportsman's, but it's a clunky thing. We're filling up the programs, which is great. But could we get more people feeling better about it if it was a little nicer for their, what they were doing their online signup? If we choose to go down that path, there could be some wins by pairing it with a website that is also produced by that same company. Y'all had a good taste of sort of what happens a lot of times with civic tech. You end up with something that goes end of life and you don't have any control over it. And so then you gotta go jump into something new when you, maybe you weren't planning for it. We can make, we can be adaptable. We can make those changes. But our hunch right now is that if we were to join up with maybe one of the larger civic tech groups that does agenda management, that does website, that does rec programming, that does mass notification and other tools as well, that we might be better insulated from some of those end of life surprises that we've been getting from places like Novus. So if we do it, we'd want to kind of stage it all out. So we do sort of things in the, in the right order to get into that one house model. We also though, would need to put it on the calendar and make sure we've got enough bandwidth to handle it. So with the parks programming in particular, we know that that summertime is the really, really busiest time and they have to be ready in the spring with the Clive Connected Communication. Would we have enough time if we decided to jump into something new to get it stood up in time for all the spring programming while simultaneously continuing all of the fall and winter programming?
So I think, I think we've talked about this before, but I think if we, if we do decide to go down that path, a lot of these providers, they will provide, you know, discounted pricing or per module discounts or whatever. So that might be an opportunity to get some cost efficiency if we're already heading down that discussion path.
And we went down that path actually when we were evaluating vendors for the agenda management software. Because we wanted, the, the company we're moving forward with specifically that they make Civic Clerk, they're called Civic Plus. They're one of those big umbrella groups that has all of these offerings. And before we took a, said yes on Civic Clerk, we said, now we need to show, you need to show us what's your cost look like for website, rec programming, mass notification. We're going to make them sharpen their pencils even more too. They've been, they want, they've been aggressive with their sales recently. They're really hustling to try and get us in.
You can point out some of the difficulties we had tonight too.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Did that answer your question, Councilman?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I want to give Molly a big shout out. Molly has taken on a ton of work in these first six months. You could see that reflected in a lot of the data that she just shared. And I'm very excited about some of these strategic opportunities we have in front of us now. And having both of us now in a position to be able to take bigger bites, it should further accelerate our communications. It's going to win, it's going to create a lot of wins for the city of Clive.
Absolutely.
Great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Molly.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now we'll move into our reports. Pete?
So from one good story to the next, we've got over 90 folks who have said they want to sign up to do the SQR program this season. So on the 14th next week, we will have our informational meeting for those 90 plus that have already signaled they want to be in the program. Their final step they need to take to lock in a spot is to send us their cost share amount. Julia McGuire, who runs the program is doing a great job and she has been sending out those offer letters to interested households all across the city. And from a square footage standpoint, we look like we're going to be able to actually exceed what we were doing last year. Thank you very much to our partners at Metro Waste because none of this is possible until we actually have the compost. Another neat part of the story and not to sue your thunder, Councilman on this, but there was a great piece in KC, the KCCI did last week that Matt included in his weekly email, talking about one of those silver linings that comes out of all of this, the storm. We're turning that stuff around as we chip it up here in Clive and send it out to Metro. Metro's then taken it, making it a valuable product and they're sending it back to Clive now so that we can make more investments in these yards. It's a great full circle story. The other thing, and I'm sure Matt will touch on this too, but we hope all of you will be able to join us at our joint event with Crestview Elementary and West Des Moines Community Schools tomorrow. The weather's going to be beautiful. And we're going to have a really nice night set up for all of the families and all of the, the neighbors. It's an event for the entire neighborhood, whether you have kiddos going to Crestview or they went to Crestview before, or you never had any touch with Crestview. Our goal here is to just make sure that all of those residents know that they have partners who are ready to listen and work hard for them at city and also at the school district as we keep thinking about the next chapters in those neighborhoods.
Very good. Anything else, Pete? No, your honor. Shrek on.
We had another DART meeting on Tuesday. This, this one actually was under an hour by two minutes.
Wow.
Stop it. Yeah.
Power went out or?
So there, there were some presentations I thought were worth sharing. We, they, we did get the presentation on the annual key performance indicators. So this is more network wide, not Clive specific, but there, there's some interesting statistics in here. There was a total of 96,784 trips in the last fiscal year. So that's July 1 of last year to June 30th of this year. 102,648 individuals for ridership. And then their on-time performance for the DART fleet is just barely above 90, which is really good actually, 90.19.
What are they defining as trip, Shrek on?
Like you mean, you mean the total trip statistic?
Yeah. How are they defining what a trip is?
That I don't know. That they didn't, they didn't really go into the specifics on that. I can, I can ask and follow up.
Yeah, that's just something that's so nebulous, like be defined in so many different ways, right? What does that actually mean?
I mean, in the past, what I've, what I've heard Luis say is that it's, it's a trip is when a rider gets on at one point and then exits the bus. So if you have to do a transfer, I would assume that would count as like multiple trips. So if you have to take three buses to get to wherever you're going, that's three trips.
Right.
But, but I can follow up and confirm on that.
Could you also maybe follow up on the, the number I'm always intrigued in on anything, not just DART, but is unique, right? And so the 102 certainly isn't unique riders. And so what is that number would be?
And, and that, that would probably include the, the state fair ridership, which that, you know, spikes, right? Cause everybody uses DART during the state fair. There is a, there is a KPI here. So there's 1,282 unique riders.
I'm sorry, 1,282 unique riders in a year, right? In the DART system, right?
We could buy them all cars for the amount of money we.
182 unique riders the entire year on the bus system.
Yep. No, no, this is, this is the DART.
This is the entire DART system.
That, that's the statistic that was given yesterday, or not yesterday, Tuesday.
Doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I can, I can follow up on that. I was a little surprised by that too. I had to join virtually, so.
If it's right, the votes are easy.
How do you characterize unique riders, Mike?
You and I would be unique. You could ride it 50 times a year. I could ride it 300. We'd be counted as two unique riders, right? So regardless of how many times you ride, you know, that's the, that's the, the number I'd like to see as well is when you gave the Clive numbers was like 12, right? Right? How many of those are unique riders? No, I think the unique rider was 12 or eight or whatever it was.
Yeah, I think it's 12.
So that's 12 riders in the city of Clive ride DART, right?
But there were like 1,200 total trips or something like that. So they're riding it. The 12 people are riding it.
The 12 needed, right? So we take care of the 12 for sure.
Again, for, for the amount of money that we're providing to DART, we could buy every one of those 12 people their own vehicle.
Or Uber passes for those two trips a day or whatever, right? Yeah.
So, yeah, a couple of other interesting statistics, more than anything, average travel miles is 7.29 per, per rider. And it's average travel time is 32 minutes. So that's pretty long, 7.29 miles. Another thing I wanted to share, there are changes coming to Route 52, which is the Jordan Creek route. They're going to move that from 30 minutes to 40 minutes on frequency. And they'll, they're going to maintain the, the evenings and weekend service. It's currently at an hour that'll stay the same. One of the things that I thought was interesting that I wanted to share, they're moving from 30 to 40 minutes because that, that route already has the lowest on-time performance. It's at like 37 minutes and they, they accounted it to how much traffic ends up on 60th and on Jordan Creek. And so they said they, they're basically just not able to keep on time because of the traffic. The metric was already at roughly 37 minutes. And so they're, they're just kind of making it official. So it sounds like.
Makes sense.
Dart, Reimagine Dart is continuing. We, we had the meetings previously. Not much of an update on this meeting, which is maybe why it stayed under an hour. But, but there were, there were, there were references to reimagine Dart and rethinking the structure and, and the service levels throughout some of those performance metrics that I just shared.
Hey, Shrek on, do you know about when they're expecting to finish reimagine Dart?
Right, started in 2015.
No, I, I don't know if they even know exactly what the timeline is. I can, I can check with Amanda if there's revised timing. I know they're still working on kind of, they're continuing, I should say, they're continuing to work on getting as much of the funding for reimagine Dart out of DART's budget. So that may impact where we land too. Right now, there, there wasn't, there was an additional grant from the city of Des Moines that was like 20,000. I don't remember the amount, but you, you know, it's a little bit. So that brings their total money raised for reimagine Dart up to like four mid-fours. So they're like halfway funded pretty much. I, I, I don't, there has been discussion about, and I've been a pretty vocal proponent for this, that if we don't get that money fully funded, we shouldn't do the, like, we shouldn't spend that money if it's not getting through. It's not coming from grants and other sources rather than coming from the DART budget. So I, I think there's still that question Ted of, of what is the scope still? Which will obviously affect the timeline.
And this is an unfair question. You probably don't know, but just curious, do you know? when the City of Des Moines will complete their study?
So the, the last we heard Mayor Boson, she was saying it was going to happen very quickly. I think I I will want to confirm the date, but I believe she was saying end of Q three.
Cause I gotta believe that's going to have some impact, well, based off what they do with respect to Reimagined Dart as well.
So Des Moines' position has been no, it's just more of an informative thing for them, but.
I don't believe that.
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that one. So, but yeah, they've, they've said that their study is more of just to educate their council members is, is, has been the mayor's position. But, but they are expecting that study to be completed well in advance of Reimagined Dart.
Could you report back next time? Certainly there's an amount. I just haven't heard one yet, but what Des Moines Partnership is putting into this study, it would seem like it would be a huge piece for Des Moines Partnership of investing in.
The, the Des Moines study or the?
Yeah, that's a good point, right? Where you go straight to the Des Moines as Des Moines Partnership, but there's supposed to be metrowide. But what the Des Moines Partnership is putting into this study, I would think it would be very significant with their partners and members being corporate and citywide. So if you could get back on that one.
Okay. And I think.
Paula needs new socks too from Dart.
I think, I think that's it. Yep. Oh, one other thing, Grimes withdrawal is still happening July first of twenty twenty-five.
They have to give eighteen months notice.
Yeah. So at the end of this fiscal year for Dart, they'll, they'll be out.
All right. Ted?
No report, your nightmare.
Eric? A couple of things, Mayor, the three to five movement is wrapping up. This weekend will be the final list of activities. The last headcount number or numbers that I got was almost two weeks ago and it was about twenty-three hundred to the forty-five hundred threshold. So I would imagine we're well over three thousand at this point. I don't want to speculate. Our own effort here in Clive, we're at about four hundred and seventy-five to the five hundred commitment that, that we gave them. So we'll get that here in the next, next day or two. There's significant activities going on both Friday and Saturday. Probably the key one for, for this council is, is the effort to coincide with Russ Trimble, Mayor Trimble and West Des Moines, Saturday from two to five. So there's a meeting linking up. I'll send that an email, but they're linking up at two, going out and, and knocking doors and then linking back up at Jethro's for a social hour right there too. Also Saturday morning, Adele Sweetcorn Festival. There's some other things as well. So there's a plethora of activities to, to get these. We're hoping that we're getting a strong participation from some of the outlying cities as well. I was in Van Meter today for the Dallas County Economic Development. I know they've been working diligently as well as a number of others. So I'm going to try and get some, some numbers from Mayor Clark here today, tomorrow, so we know where we're going, heading into this weekend right there. But we encourage everyone to, to assist and appreciate the efforts that everyone's given so far too.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Central Iowa Water Works, the opportunity for applications for an executive director that's out on the street now, so that's the, the big news. The board members have been able to visit the various plants in the area. Des Moines, Saylorville, and there's an upcoming one at the other reservoirs. So anyway, stay tuned. Hope, we hope to get a director hired in the next few months. Susan?
I have nothing tonight, your honor.
Michael?
I do not have anything.
Legal counsel?
No report, your honor. Just a few items. Just a reminder, Tuesday next week starts our strategic planning workshops with Lyle Summick. It'll, for the council will be, start at three o'clock at the Public Safety Building. We'll be in the training room. There with the big group with the executive team and the mayor and council for Tuesday night and then Thursday night. Starting at three o'clock, we'll be here in the Northwest Conference Room. And then the last session, the next week after that on Saturday morning, also in the Northwest Conference Room. So I look forward to talking through with you all just a number of items on that strategic planning list. And also I will be sharing every, before every strategic planning sessions, I usually give you all those kind of strategic issue memos. Kind of staffing, community resilience, financial strategy, got those drafted, ready to go. Include those in my weekly update. We'll have printed versions in your binders for you next week. Also, as Pete mentioned, the school event, some officials from the superintendent, the principal of Crestview, myself, will have a few comments to make around four PM from the three to seven timeframe, just to welcome folks and encourage, we're going to have a couple booths specifically or tables with our design teams with both the Lanan Park. So Smith Group will have a number of boards there, both in English and Spanish for folks to vote on in terms of ideas on playgrounds, splash pads, shelters, a whole lot of areas in the park. So we want to get some input there. That's really a big part of it for us in terms of this event. We'll also have the McClure team there. We're working on designs related to the temporary park down in the Flood Permeant Property Buyout area further down the hill. So we'll have some really great opportunities for the neighborhood to kind of start shaping what they want to see for their park spaces in this neighborhood, which is great. And really happy that we'll have some good weather and some food trucks and some music and it'll be a great evening. Also kind of things as we get in, getting closer later to this, later of the summer and closer to the fall is, I know there's a previous conversation about beggars night staying on October thirtieth. Just wanted to let, remind the council that we had, you all had approved a continuing resolution on that. So you don't have to set that every year. So until that changes, it'll be October thirtieth every year. So you don't have to do a specific proclamation every year. We changed that, I think, two years ago, I believe it was. Wanted to mention too, Jay Freiberg and I were talking about this earlier this week. Some of the bridge jumping issues have popped up a little bit, but more in the middle of the night and not so much during the day. So we have last weekend coming across some late night partying happening in the Campbell Park parking lot. And bridge jumping at the same time that our officers are coming across. I'll have some photos to share of that. But there is going to be some, a little bit of special enforcement happening and especially when we're talking about park spaces after hours. Trespassing charges are a potential, particularly for those kinds of situations and the bridge jumping. So just know that that is something that Police Department is looking into. Lastly too, just after the meeting here, I've got some printed copies. I know I shared digitally the floor plan that we're getting pretty much close to final in terms of the remodel of this facility. We'll be talking more about it at strategic planning in terms of this is now getting costed out by our construction manager, DCI group. To see how it fits within the budget and what some choices we may need to make. But I'll have some printed copies if you want to take them with you and take a look at. But that's all I have, your honor, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Anything for Matt? Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we'll adjourn at seven eighteen.